Regular meeting number 29 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem. President Protam Tyson, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the life, liberty, and the space of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Monsignor Cody.
Let us bow our heads in prayer. Eternal and merciful God, we gather with the members of Columbus City Council this evening as they address the business of our great city. They join all of us as we remember in our thoughts and prayers our Muslim brothers and sisters as they celebrate and observe the holy month of Ramadan. At the same time, we join the members of council as we all remember in prayers and in our thoughts, our brothers and sisters in Manchester and London, England, who once again suffer the tragedy of terrorism. May the victims rest in peace, may their families be comforted, and may all of us do whatever we can to foster peace and harmony among all the members of the human race. We pray earnestly for an end to terrorism, an end to racism, bigotry, and unjust discrimination of any kind. May we be instruments and ministers of your peace, your Salam, your Shalom, and work together for one another's good and bring an end to the hatred and violence that is so destructive of all of us. May your peace, may your peace reign in our hearts and in our world. Amen.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda, be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
How about resolutions from members of council, starting with council member Elizabeth Brown?
Thank you, President Klein. I have no resolutions, but I want to invite Director Gallagher to provide an update to council. Earlier this year, when we passed the renewal of our recycling contract with Rumke, council passed that contingent upon periodic updates from you, Director Gallagher, and your department regarding how we're trying to ensure cost savings and long-term sustainability for the program. I know you've been hard at work the last few months, so if you can take the opportunity to update us.
Council President Klein, Chair Brown, other members of council, thank you for giving us opportunity to update you. We have been in conversations with Rumke since the last time we were here. We believe we have a couple good options with them where we could get approximately 10% savings on the contract, and those will be some short-term gains. We're still working through the details and the viability of those options. We meet with them again here in a couple weeks, so hopefully after that, we'll be able to have more details to share. And again, once we're kind of through that short-term evaluation, then we will continue to look at more long-term sustainable opportunities.
Are there questions from my colleagues for the director? I just want to thank you for giving us the update. Priority one was to not stop service for our residents, and I really appreciate your hard work to make sure that happened, but a very, very close second priority is to really bring costs down from where the current contract is. So thanks to your team and yourself for the hard work. That's all I have, President Klein.
Thank you, Council President. I do have one resolution. Due to the holiday last week, I was unable to recognize the efforts of Radio One and the Wear Orange March that was held this last Friday. Resolution number 0165X2017, to recognize June as Gun Violence Awareness Month in Columbus, Ohio. Whereas each year on June 2nd, thousands of Americans wear orange to remember those lost to gun violence and raise awareness about the epidemic of gun violence in our communities. And whereas Wear Orange Day began in 2013 in honor of 15-year-old high-debt Pendleton who was shot and killed in Chicago, her family, friends, and neighbors wore orange to remember a beautiful young life cut short by violence. And whereas in 2016, more than 15,000 people were killed by firearm, and over 30,000 were injured. And almost, additional, almost 4,000 children under the age of 18 were injured or killed in an accident involving firearms. Whereas this council supports the right to law-abiding gun ownership, but would like to highlight the importance of gun safety in order to prevent nearly 2,000 unintentional shootings which occur every year. And whereas while these statistics are tragic, it is important to remember that each one of these victims is a son, a mother, a sister, a husband, or a cousin that was taken from the family and the community too soon. And whereas with violent crime on the rise across America and here in Columbus, it is important for residents and law enforcement officials to build partnerships to keep our community safe, it is important that information is shared so that individuals involved can be brought to justice. Be it resolved by this council or the city of Columbus, that this council does hereby recognize the month of June as Gun Violence Awareness Month, remembers the tragic toll gun violence has had on our community, and urges the residents of Columbus to stand with law enforcement in keeping our community safe. I move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you, Council President. In light of the fact that Mr. Ellis from Radio One is not present, I'll make sure that he receives this resolution from me. Is he here, Mr. Ellis? Please, come forward. While Mr. Ellis is coming forward, I would like to acknowledge just this year, and from as of May 2017, over 1,277 guns have been turned in or confiscated by, to the Columbus Police Division. Over 1,200 guns. It is absolutely unconscionable in our society to have those kinds of issues going on in our society, and yet it continues to take place. With that, Mr. Ellis, would you please make some comments, sir?
Counsel, Councilmember Brown, thank you very much for having us here. Radio One, if you look at our creed, says very little about radio, but more about community. And so one thing that we believe is if you can change one life, then you can begin to change your community. We have the ability with Radio One to reach hundreds of thousands of people with our platform, and we realize that it's our responsibility to use that platform to make positive change here in Columbus, Ohio. And so we appreciate your continued support for Wear Orange Day, National Gun Violence Awareness, and whatever you need from Radio One, I stand here as the voice, and as well as my colleagues who are here today as well, saying that whatever you need from us, let us know. And I'm gonna have them stand, because they do some great work. Can y'all stand real fast, real quick, please? This is my Radio One family that came with us today to put a lot of work into our Wear Orange event, so we appreciate you all, we support you all, and again, whatever you need from us, let us know. Thank you.
And if I may, if you notice, all of my colleagues are wearing orange. Council President Shannon Harden has his upstairs in his office. So we're being covered. Any comments from my colleagues? Please, Councilmember Stenziano.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Just want to thank you and your team. A great event, again, the ongoing commitment to make sure there's that awareness, and the message of really doing it for our youth was really appreciated and something that was not underscored at all this past week. So again, thank you and your team for your ongoing leadership on this important issue.
Thank you. Councilmember Harden.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown, and please don't take my lack of orange tie this evening as a show of support. I want to recognize Radio One and your leadership, Yavis, for stepping up in the community. It was very visible this weekend, but on the radio throughout the year. And certainly want to recognize my colleague, Councilmember Brown, who has really stepped up, and this is really about saving lives, especially as we go towards the summer months, about saving lives in our community. And because of your two leadership, the leadership of Radio One, I think that we will have a safer summer. So thank you.
President Protam Tyson.
Thank you, Chairman Brown, and thank you for this resolution. And to Yavis, just continue the work about community and building community, because we certainly know that, if you look at some of the facts about who's coming into our emergency rooms, that we realize that, and certainly with the gun violence from using, from being, you know, shot, that individuals who are affected by gun violence, what we have finding, and this is really around the country, is that 30 to 60% of those individuals that come in for, though, for a gun, for being harmed by guns, should they be able to move past that particular situation, the odds are 30 to 60% will come back in for those same reasons. And that's a lot that's about community and how we're all working together. I know this body is, administration is too, but we also need partners like you to help us to amplify our community and to, for people not to become, you know, victims of gun violence, but we have to make sure our neighborhoods, our neighborhoods are really key to helping individuals not come back and be a victim of gun violence. So thank you for focusing on community.
Thank you. Any others? If not, thank you very, very much, Mr. Ellis. Thank you.
That's all I have, Council President.
Thank you, President Klein. This evening, I have Resolution 1059X-2017, to recognize and celebrate the month of June as Immigrant Heritage Month, and I'd like to invite Ms. Claudia Moadion, Apostle Alex, and really everyone up to come receive this resolution. I don't usually read all the resolutions, but I wanted to read a few parts of this resolution. Whereas immigration has been an integral component of the growth and success of the United States of America, the state of Ohio and the city of Columbus since our founding. And whereas immigrants contribute cultural richness to the city of Columbus and are active participants in the economy and subsequent success and prosperity of the city of Columbus. And whereas the city of Columbus is proud of its history of welcoming and accepting all people, all groups of people exemplified by its new American initiative, which provides a comprehensive strategy to give equal opportunity to all refugees and immigrants, and allows them to become responsible, productive residents of the city of Columbus. And whereas Columbus will continue to support immigrant families and their businesses, Columbus is a welcoming and inclusive city and stands as a pillar of acceptance throughout the United States, now there be it resolved. Wanted to highlight, one, the work of the organizations that are here, but also the leadership of so many, of this council. I find it a point of pride to serve with this council, and folks have been stepping up throughout the community over the last year or so, really to affirm that this city is a welcoming city and that our greatness is built on our diversity, and that's what we want to celebrate this June. And so before I move for a passage, I want to open up to any council members, see if they have any additional comments. If not, I will move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you so much. Ms. Claudia.
Good evening, Councilmember Harden, President Klein, President Protam Tyson, and city council members. My name is Claudia De Leon, and I am the president of the Hispanic Chamber of Columbus. Recently relaunched, we changed our strategy to diversify our membership with small business owners, corporate partners, and individuals all seeking to gain resources, connections, and further integrate into our greater Columbus community. I'm also vice president of TSJ Media, one of the largest media companies in the Midwest. In Columbus, we operate FM Spanish radio stations, newspapers, a digital app, and we coordinate events, all geared to the growing Hispanic community, working closely with local entrepreneurs for their marketing needs. Thank you for providing a resolution for National Immigrant Heritage Month and recognizing the positive impact of immigrants in central Ohio. Central Ohio's diversity, fueled in great part by immigrants, makes us stronger and more connected as a community. Recognizing Immigrant Heritage Month would give us an opportunity to explore our own heritage and to celebrate the shared diversity that forms the unique story of our region and our contribution to the country. Immigrants continue to be almost twice as likely as native-born to become entrepreneurs. In 2014, immigrant entrepreneurs launched 28.5% of new businesses. Central Ohio accounts for approximately 3,568 Hispanic-owned businesses as of 2012, contributing to a 65% increase since 2007. The overall growth rate for all firms in Ohio was just 0.8% in the same period. Hispanic-owned businesses in Ohio have increased employment at a rate of 104.1%, while employment rates of mainstream firms have increased by only 2.2%. Hispanic buying power has increased across the country, but particularly in Ohio, Hispanic buying power grew 443%, reaching $8.4 billion in 2013. Our varying backgrounds as immigrants allows us to identify gaps in the marketplace for products and services that could benefit our local communities, truly allowing us to contribute to the growing diversity of central Ohio. The contributions immigrants make to our economy, society, and general diversity truly deserves acknowledgement, and I would like to proudly support your initiatives in recognizing the impact of immigrants in central Ohio via the resolution for National Immigrant Heritage Month. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and congratulations. I would be remiss if I didn't recognize the work of Assistant Director Guadalupe Velazquez, Director William Scott, and the entire Department of Neighborhoods for really being our front line of encouraging diversity inclusion in celebrating our immigrant population here in Columbus. Director Scott, do you have any additional comments?
Thank you, Chair Harden. I would just like to say again how we appreciate working with all these groups, and it helps to make Columbus the diverse and great city that it is, and we will continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if, can y'all just stay up here, and if it's okay with you, Councilmember Harden, since we have such a great group of people celebrating Immigrant Heritage Month, if Councilmember Harden, since it's your floor, if you'll indulge me to go to Rules and Reference in 1304-2017 to enact a new section 161.10 of the Columbus City Codes to prohibit denial of city services, misuse of city resources, and solicitation of information about a person's immigrant status by city employees or officials. This is the codification of the mayor's executive order, putting in code our appreciation, respect, and love for all of our immigrant and refugee friends, knowing, as Ms. Claudia outlined, the significant economic impact and job creators that immigrants and refugees and new Americans have become, and how important it is for the fabric of our culture and society, and from a safety standpoint, for the assimilation and integration to make Columbus an open and welcoming city. I think it's appropriate to just bring this forward now, since we have such a beautiful sight of Columbus residents here, and go ahead and consider this piece of legislation. I checked with the clerk, and she said, because I'm council president, I can do that now. So I'll go ahead and take it upon my ability to do it. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments on this Rules and Reference piece? Ms. Claudia, would you or anyone from the community wish to speak about how important a piece of legislation like this is for our community?
It is, my name is Apostle Alex and a native of Ghana. It is a very great opportunity to have us in the state and in the city of Columbus. This is a very important legislation to pass on, because some of our immigrant communities are already in a scary situation right now. Some don't even want to drive on the street, some even don't want to shop around in neighborhoods that they think they can be harassed by police or be forced to prove their status in the United States. So we here by stand with our fellow immigrants and request that this be passed on to give us stability and peace in the city of Columbus.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak while you're here?
Thank you, Council President Klein and city council. This is a huge step forward in the city, sending a great message to the state of Ohio and basically to the United States. We in the community, especially in the Latino community, we don't advocate to have a sanctuary city, but rather to make sure, you know, that civil rights and human rights are not violated by any type of legislation or political peace that is affecting our human life here in the United States. All humans have the same right, all humans, that depends, regardless of the statuses and the papers that they have, that are not illegal, like we hear many times in the TV and the messages and the news. Everybody has the right to live, everybody has the right to have happiness, and immigrants, like anybody else, 100 years ago, 100 years from now, will come into the United States to this great nation because we're looking for the dream. We're looking for the best for their family, for their society, and for our kids, and that's what inspires. And today, the city of Columbus has sent a great message, not only to immigrant community, but I guess to the rest of the United States, saying, you know, that the city is really welcoming immigrants and everybody who is coming to the city. Thank you.
Ms. Vasquez, do you want to, do you want to speak? Okay. Yeah, President Protam Tyson.
Thank you, President Klein. Thank you for sponsoring this piece of legislation. Certainly to each and every one of you who are standing here, just really do, certainly Columbus is an open and welcoming city, and it is that because of you. And thank you for what you do each and every, each and every day to make sure that our city continues to move forward. It only moves forward because of you and your contributions. I know many of you who are standing here, and I know how hard you work for the benefit of this community. And so again, just thank you. I'm excited that we are codifying the executive order of the administration, and just appreciate you, and just know that we're here to work with you and to ensure that you certainly have the same rights and privileges as of every single person standing next to you and for every single resident of this community. So thank you, and thank you, President Klein.
Please, if you just could state your name for the record.
I'm Ana Maria Peradas Lang. I represent Bell Harbor Management of Ohio. I am a Native American made over this country, but my, our properties just have a lot of people, immigrant people, and I just wanted to tell you all that it, we've been, I've been living in, living in, working in this city for a very long time, and business is, business is good when everybody's accepting of everybody. And, you know, I feel very honored to represent the people of my properties that are, come from all over the world, and to know that this is something that's so important to this city, that they actually put it in writing and had it there. You know, for us that are born here, we take it for granted, but it means so much when you're, when you don't know the language and where you're just trying to do better for your family. So on behalf of my company and the residents, thank you all.
Thank you for those kind words. I can't reiterate enough just how important this is when, as it relates to human decency and respect, how important it is for our economy, not only for the entrepreneurship and job creators, but to retain and attract the best talent in the world, you have to have an open and accepting culture in order to grow a strong economy for everyone. And finally, just the safety aspect, and having all walks of life, regardless of where you're from, know that the city cares about you and appreciates you, so that if something does happen, you can pick up the phone and feel comfortable calling Columbus Police Department, so that we can make our streets safer. So this is a trifecta of reasons why the city would put forward a piece of legislation like this, codify it in our city code as an expression of our values, for our economy, and for the safety of all individuals. So thank you so much, and I appreciate everyone's flexibility on me kind of calling an audible here, but I thought it made sense, just seeing all the wonderful people standing before us. So if I can get a motion for passage of 1304-2017? Seconded. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Legislation passes. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harden, I stole your thunder. Is there anything else that you'd like? I appreciate your flexibility, sir. Are you finished? Okay. Councilmember Page.
Thank you, President Klein. I don't have an announcement myself, but I would like to ask Director Collins to speak briefly about the success of the play golf outing that we had, and how that would work to help more of our young people in our community. Director Collins.
Thank you, Councilmember Page, President Klein, members of council. We are very excited about the success of our play outing, and want to thank everybody for participating and the support. Of course, our corporate partners that joined in, but all of our golf teams as well. 2016, we raised a record amount of $62,000 that we used to award scholarships last year. We're proud to tell you that this year's efforts generated $92,000 in funds to go towards raising scholarship funds for our children to attend our summer programs and our programs all year round. So as we've said before, there is no financial barrier, no child will be turned away from a program with recreation and parks, so those funds are available through our play grants, thanks to those partners and all those people who participated. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Director Collins, and for your hard work and efforts with the play outing. That's all I have, President Klein.
Thank you. I have one resolution, and I'm going to ask for Kathy Spats, Teresa Langer, Terrell Spencer, and let's see, and everyone who was with the Management Association to walk towards the podium. I want to see, B. Tober, let's see. All right, and this is to recognize the week of June 5th through the 9th of 2017 as Leadership Week in the city of Columbus, and to amend the, and to commend the Columbus Public Service Chapter of the National Management Association, NMA, the Leadership Development Organization, on its 39th anniversary, and to applaud NMA's leadership efforts. Whereas June 5th through the 9th of 2017 is a 39th observance of Leadership Week in America by the NMA, the largest nonprofit of its type. And whereas NMA is a professional organization dedicated to leadership, business excellence, personal and professional growth, and fellowship to its more than 15,000 members. And whereas the city of Columbus recognizes the importance of that exchange of ideas and the discussion of various leadership challenges and solutions, has on the vitality and the development of the city's economy and quality of life as seen through the increased productivity, competition, and growth. Whereas the Columbus Public Service Chapter is a public sector chapter of the NMA, whose members strive to uphold the principles of the organization through lifelong learning, leadership development, skills training, and networking and mentoring. And whereas the International Observance of Leadership Week encourages leaders to increase competence, inspire peers, and foster a better understanding of management and professional leadership. And whereas the NMA will use its national convention as a forum to highlight and promote leadership as a viable and thriving profession, now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Columbus, that this council does hereby recognize the week of June 5th through the 9th of 2017 as NMA Leadership Week in Columbus, and commend the organization, the Columbus Public Service Chapter of NMA, for their efforts to improve leadership and to support managing professionals in and around the city of Columbus. I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Teresa, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Protam Tyson. Good afternoon, President Klein, council members, elected officials, members of cabinet. Thank you for this opportunity again to accept this honor regarding Management Week in America on behalf of the Columbus Public Service Chapter of the National Management Association. As you know, I'm Teresa Langer, the president, and we are a group here of city employees dedicated, dedicated to the personal and professional growth, and this is through unique training opportunities, community service involvement, and monthly meetings, which we have speakers such as yourselves who have come to speak before our group, and we appreciate you taking the time out of your busy schedule to do that. This was also a great way to get to know you all. A little bit about Management Week in America. Since its inception in 1978 by the NMA, Management Week in America has grown in recognition each year, and in 1982, a joint congressional resolution was signed into law reflecting the dates, and in June of 1983, President Ronald Reagan issued a proclamation designating the week, June 5th through 11th, as Management Week in America. And each chapter across the United States have celebrated this event. We are grateful for this honor in accepting this resolution today. Our chapter will have an awards recognition at our monthly membership meeting later on this month. And like I said, most of our, our members are city employees, and they are represented by the, most of the departments here today. And I want to thank the departments that, that support our members, and would like to introduce who I have with me today. B., would you like to say a few words?
We want to thank you all. I'm B. Tober. I'm the-
I'm the Vice President.
Hello, everyone. My name is Victoria Landrum. Actually, I'm a retired city employee, still a member, but I formerly was from Department Technology.
Good evening. I'm Terrell Spencer with the Department of Finance and Management.
Good evening. I'm Renee Hudson, work with the Public Safety Police. Been with NMA for a year and with the city for almost 20 years.
I'm Ian Foster. I'm also a retired city employee from Columbus, had served in Public Service Department, Transportation Division for 38 years before retiring.
Good evening. I'm Joya Brooks. I've been with the city just four years with Public Safety Support Services.
And good afternoon. I'm Kathy Spatz with Recreation and Parks, and I have the privilege to also serve as not only a National Director for our chapter, but as the National Vice Chair. And I can tell you that the City of Columbus continues to be not only bright and vibrant in our chapter, but we're continuing to lead the nation in what service to the community means and what service as leaders mean. And one of the all-time favorite quotes of Kettering, Charles F. Kettering, the founder of NMA, "The opportunities through NMA are unlimited. One needs only to participate." And the efforts that you'll find, not only in the community service, but through the department efforts, through our chapter, really are that. They're unlimited, and the creativity that we have is really pretty impressive. So, we really do appreciate this recognition of the efforts that we put forth every day.
My bi-weekly hearing on legislation will be tomorrow in Council chambers at 4:00. Thank you.
Are there any comments by our elected officials or members of the administration? We'll start with Mr. Dorian, Treasurer's Office, City Attorney's Office, members of the administration. I don't see anyone here from the judiciary. So, we'll move on. At this time, I have one ordinance. It's 1374-2017, and Public Service and Transportation to be taken off the Consent Action portion of the agenda. Any other requests by members of council for removal of a piece of legislation from the consent? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive second reading, I'm sorry, waiving of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you, Clerk Blevins. Will you now read into the record the ordinance numbers of each on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee ordinance is 1310, 1322, 1334, 1336, 1390, and 1418-2017. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance is 1414-2017. Administration Committee ordinance 1324-2017. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance 1337-2017. Neighborhoods Committee ordinance 1331-2017. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinances 1263 and 1264-2017. Housing Committee ordinance 1338-2017. Technology Committee ordinances 1081, 1232, 1346, and 1379-2017. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 1246, 1256, 1311, 1312, 1314, 1325, 1329, 1353, 1357, and 1375-2017. Judiciary and Court Administration Committee ordinance 1343-2017. Rules and Reference Committee ordinance 1200-2017. Zoning Committee ordinance is 1382, 1383, 1438, 1439, 1440, and 1033-2017.
Thank you, clerk. The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will you please read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 123X, 155X, and 162X, 164X-2017. Finance Committee ordinance is 966, 1042, 1276, 1391, 1396, 1398, 1411, and 1412-2017. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance is 1237, 1380, 1384, and 1406-2017. Economic Development Committee ordinances, or, excuse me, one ordinance, 1268-2017. Administration Committee ordinance is 1287, 1288, and 1327-2017. Public Safety Committee ordinance 1070 and 1365-2017. Public Service and Transportation Committee Resolution 139X-2017. Ordinance is 10, 1088, 1153, 1161, 1180, 1275, 1373, 1387, 1403, 1408, 1409, and 1451-2017. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is 1257, 1258, 1260, 1262, and 1450-2017. Housing Committee ordinance is 1354, 1355, 1370, 1388, 1420, 1421, and 1422-2017. Technology Committee ordinance is 1282 and 1361-2017. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 530, 1155, 1181, 1192, 1290, 1345, 1363-2017. Judiciary and Court Administration Committee ordinance 739-2017.
Thank you, clerk. We do have one speaker on the consent portion. It's Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, you have three minutes. It looks like you're speaking on 1388-2017. It's in the Housing Committee.
Speaking on 1370-2017, Nathaniel George Wilkins. I just want to know what's going to happen with 1546 on Myrtle Avenue. I do know that this property has been empty for a long time, but I would just like to know who, who's going to get this property through the land bank. But I would like to see a long-term tenant in it for more than 50 years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Mr. McGinnis, if you could follow up with Mr. Wilkins on that inquiry, we would appreciate it. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Wilkins? Seeing none, can I get a motion for approval of the Consent Action portion of the agenda? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Consent Action carries. We'll now proceed to the second reading of 30-day tabled and emergency legislation. The First Committee is Finance, is chaired by the President Pro Tem. President Pro Tem Tyson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. The first ordinance I have is 1278-2017, is to authorize and direct the city auditor to appropriate and transfer $1.5 million from the Special Income Tax Fund to the Fleet Management Fund, Capital Fund, to amend the 2017 capital improvement budget, to authorize a transfer of funds between projects within the Fleet Management Capital Fund, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to enter into a contract with RW Satterland Building Company for the construction of a new fueling facility, to authorize expenditure of $7,826,500 from the Fleet Management Capital Fund, and to declare an emergency. This new fueling facility will include a complete compressed natural gas fueling center, which will be open to the public for CNG fueling needs. In addition to CNG, this new fueling facility will also contain a petroleum fueling center whereby both unleaded and diesel, diesel fuel will be dispensed from above-ground storage tanks. These above-ground storage tanks will include a 1,000-gallon gasoline tank and a 6,000-gallon diesel tank. Only city vehicles will be allowed access to the petroleum fueling sections of the new fueling facility. Primary uses of this fueling facility include the Public Service Refuge Collection Division, the Public Service Infrastructure Management Division, as well as Fire Station 31. This fueling complex will be open to all city divisions 24/7, as well as other municipal agencies that have a shared services agreement with the city. Once completed, the city will be able to close five current city fuel sites that will no longer be needed. And again, with the CNG, we'll now have, you know, CNG stations on, we have one southeast, we have one north, central, which is also with CODA, and, and also this will be on the west side. Director Lombardi, are there any other comments about the fueling station?
Thank you, President Klein, President Pro Tem Tyson. I would just want to add that this is a long time coming to, to have this new station on the west side. This will help our Refuge Division out on that side of town, and will also help Fire Station Number 31 that's out on that side of town. And again, the municipalities that can use this station will have a shared service agreement with us through the Finance Department.
Thank you, Director. There are no questions or comments. I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1352-2017, is to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to enter into a contract on behalf of the Office of Construction Management with 2K General Company for Elevator Renovation and Modernization at the Municipal Court Building, to authorize expenditure of $5,684,226 from the Construction Management Capital Improvement Fund and to declare an emergency. This renovation project will include the modernization of all public passenger elevators in numbers one through eight, and private passenger elevators number nine and 10, and also the freight service elevator number 11. The freight service elevator modernization will require the acquisition of a new elevator machine car. All other elevators will be refurbished and put back into service without the necessity to replace the entire car. Also, it will, you should be noted that an additional stop for the high-rise elevators will be added on the sixth floor to provide more efficient flow of people moving throughout the building. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. The next ordinance I have is ordinance number 1402-2017, and is to authorize the issuance of, of limited tax notes in the amount not to exceed 85, $8,500,000 to refund outstanding bond anticipation notes issued for the purpose of financing the cost of transportation projects. The original note was issued in 2009 in the amount of $29,500,000, and since then has been paid down annually. And the original notes were for the construction of the Fourth and Elm Streets and the front, Front and Ridge Street parking garage. And, Mr. Dorian, the floor is yours to add additional comments.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and all council members. This is an annual-type ordinance to renew the note indebtedness on those two garages. We will start the bidding process tomorrow. A lot of work to be done yet in these events. This is a collaboration between the Department of Finance and the City Auditor's Office, and the bids or the actual awards will be scheduled for June the 20th, I believe it is. So, I would say to you that these two garages have been amazingly successful, and there's never been a penny of city income tax put into these garages since they were built. So, I recommend and ask that you pass the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Auditor Dorian. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first want to make sure this is also Section 44-1B of the City Charter, and I move to request to waive second reading.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. I would now like to move to Health and Human Services. Thank you. The first ordinance I have is 1300-2017, is to authorize the Board of Health to enter into a contract with Equitas Health to provide continued support and expansion of a community-wide comprehensive health harm reduction program, SafePoint, and to authorize expenditure of $50,000 from the Health Special Revenue Fund and to declare an emergency. Since 2003, Franklin County has seen a 343% increase in opioid overdose. With support from Columbus Public Health, Equitas established a SafePoint, a comprehensive harm reduction program to reduce the risk associated with injection, injection drug use. Goals of the program include eliminating the spread of blood-borne pathogens and preventing accidental overdose. Since 2016, Equitas Health provided harm reduction services to 1,319 clients identified as being at risk for opiate overdose and exposure to blood-borne pathogens. Of these clients, 84, almost 85% of the clients indicated that heroin or prescription opiates were their primary drug use. Of over 495 doses of naloxone has been distributed through the SafePoint program, with at least 187 lives known to be saved from this life, from this life-saving drug. Also, according to this data, at least 40, 43%, almost 44% of the clients were given access to alcohol and drug consulting. 13% of the clients were given referrals for medical services, and about 13% were also provided referrals to behavioral healthcare services. So, this is really an important initiative with Columbus Public Health with SafePoint, and it certainly is making sure that our people are saving lives, but it's also making sure that especially Hep C is something that is not passed by using needles from one person to another for this harm reduction program, certainly is making sure that, raising the awareness of individuals about the other, other areas of their health could be compromised if they're not a part of this harm reduction program. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1305-2017. It's to authorize the establishment of Empress Petty Cash Operating Fund for the Columbus Public Health Farmers Markets to be held this summer, to authorize a transfer within the general fund, to authorize expenditure of $7,500 total, $2,500 per market, and to declare an emergency. And Nancy Bechtel, do you want to share why this is so important?
Good evening. Thank you, Councilwoman Pro Tem Tyson. So, this fund will allow the farmers that come to our farmers' markets to get paid through our WIC clients and the SNAP benefits that they use to purchase fresh produce. This is an opportunity for our WIC clients to really be exposed to a wide variety of fresh produce and to really use their benefits to gain that produce through us.
Thank you. And this is, she's mentioned how important this is. We want to make sure that our WIC clients have access to fresh, local, and healthy food, and this, again, is a component of the food plan that we as council have adopted, and to ensure that individuals have, you know, veggie SNAPS, and then obviously the SNAP benefits. And if there are no questions or comments, I would move for passage by voice vote. Clerk call the roll. By, by, clerk call the roll? By voice?
Ms. Brown, Mr. Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein, President Pro Tem Tyson.
Yes. Ordinance is passed. Thank you. And the last ordinance I have in my committee is ordinance number 1378-2017, is to authorize an appropriation of $20,000 to Columbus Public Health within the Neighborhood Initiative Subfund in support of a car seat program and to declare an emergency. Columbus Public Health and Coordination will celebrate One Infant Mortality Reduction Initiative and Save Kids Central Ohio Injury Prevention Program, distributing installs child safety seats in vehicles for qualifying city residents. Car seats are provided to qualified residents based on income at reduced prices, with convertible car seats provided at a cost of $30, and booster seats provided at a cost of $10. In addition, certified staff members In addition, certified staff members assist families who already have car seats by helping them install the seat properly into their vehicle, and at no cost to the family. Councilmember Stenziano, would you like to add some additional comments, since you have been a sponsoring, being supportive of funding this initiative over the past couple of years?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and really just want to compliment the Department of Health. They've been doing a wonderful job, and my colleagues to thank you as well. Last year, we helped fund an initial staff person, and with that increase in staffing, we found we had an increased need, and trying to really work to reduce the waitlist. This funding will provide additional car seats so that we have a very robust program, and really complement the work, again, of the Department of Health in their efforts to make sure that families have the safety of their child at utmost importance when they're in a vehicle. This funding will provide for over five hundred car seats, and again, will complement the very robust activity and programming that is done for the education also and the outreach. So also want to thank Kelly Hikes and Krista Harvey from the Department for their continued work in providing these car seats, and providing me updates, as this is such a wonderful program, and one that I want the city to be not only leading the region, but the state in. So thank you, Madam Chair.
So want to recognize certainly that, as you see, there's oftentimes where our colleagues have, the other people are sponsoring the legislation, and that's because we take our limited dollars and really try to stretch them to be able to support different initiatives. And certainly this initiative you have been championing, but also championing Councilmember Stenziano, but I also know Councilmember Harden, if you want to make any comments, and Councilmember Page has certainly put some extra dollars in to support this, but all of us as a body certainly do support this initiative and your work. And so with that, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. And also just want to recognize that when I was talking about the work of Equitas Health and the Comprehensive Harm Reduction Program, that President Klein was also a sponsor of this legislation. And I don't know if you'll make any other comments about it at all, President Klein. Okay, thank you very much. All right, that's all I have in my committees this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, President Pro Tem. The next committee is Economic Development, chaired by Councilmember Elizabeth Brown. Chair Brown, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight in Economic Development, we have ordinance ten thirty-seven dash two thousand seventeen, to authorize the Director of Development to enter into a contract with Kara Soft Technology Corp. for the purchase of Salesforce software support and training services, to authorize the transfer of thirty thousand and one dollars and sixty-three cents from within the general fund, to authorize the expenditure of thirty thousand and one dollars and sixty-three cents from the general fund, to waive the competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Code, and to declare an emergency. As stated in the title, this ordinance authorizes the city to enter into a one-year contract for the Salesforce software. Salesforce allows the city to provide enhanced customer service in an open and interactive environment, while improving coordination of development efforts between city departments and with regional partners. The Salesforce software is currently being utilized not just by our Economic Development Division, Planning Division, Housing Division, and so forth, but also by Jobs Ohio and Columbus Two Thousand Twenty, with whom the department shares information on a regular basis. It would take a substantial amount of time and money to develop any kind of alternative option with the same information sharing capabilities, which is why this contract was not competitively bid. The continued use of this software helps attract new jobs to Columbus and improves the experience of residents and businesses that interact with the city. Director Shoney, in briefing us on this software, described it as providing the department with the ability to do what our imperative is, basically to treat residents and businesses more like customers. I don't know if you have anything else to add, Mr. McGinnis, to my summary there?
Sure. Chair Brown, President Klein, members of council, thank you very much. The Salesforce platform, as you mentioned, is really a key component of our department. And we're also looking to integrate functions of the divisions of housing and planning over the next several months, but your summary was very comprehensive. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for my colleagues? Okay. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next, we have ordinance thirteen oh three dash two thousand seventeen, to authorize and direct the city auditor to transfer one million, six hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents within the general fund, to authorize and direct the city auditor to appropriate and transfer four hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-seven cents in cash from the Special Income Tax Fund to the general fund, to authorize and direct the payment of one million, five hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and two dollars and twenty-two cents to the Columbus City School District, twenty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seven cents to the Gehanna Jefferson City School District, forty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars and fourteen cents to the Hilliard City School District, thirty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-one cents to the Olin Tangi Local School District, and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars and fourteen cents to the Southwestern City School District, for income tax revenue sharing totaling one million, six hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents, to authorize the expenditure of one million, six hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents from the general fund. This is a lot of numbers, guys, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes the city of Columbus to make its regular yearly payment to school districts impacted by municipal tax abatements issued by the city. Columbus is required by the Ohio Revised Code to pay affected school districts fifty percent of the municipal income tax revenue attributable to tax-abated projects, where the annual new employee payroll for a project is one million dollars or more. These payments apply to all property tax abatements approved after July first, nineteen ninety-four. There are currently twenty tax-abated projects located in five school districts, which fall under this requirement. There are fifteen projects in the Columbus City School District, one project in the Gehanna Jefferson City School District, two projects in the Hilliard City School District, one project in the Olin Tangi Local School District, and one project in the Southwestern City School District. Do my colleagues have any questions, other than asking me to repeat all of those numbers that I barely made it through? All right, seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
I have no more in my Economic Development Committee. May I move to Administration? Thank you, President Klein. We have in Administration ordinance twelve eighty-nine dash two thousand seventeen, to authorize the Executive Director of the Civil Service Commission to execute a contract with Cambria Hotels and Suites Columbus Polaris for the procurement of hotel rooms and suites for personnel associated with upcoming Columbus Safety Forces promotional testing, to authorize the expenditure of one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents per room or suite night reserved, for a total cost not to exceed fifty thousand dollars, to waive the competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Code, and to declare an emergency. Each year, the Civil Service Commission invites safety force personnel from across the nation to participate in promotional testing for uniformed positions in the Department of Public Safety. It is necessary to secure space for the testing to take place, and hotel rooms for individuals traveling from out of state to take the test, which this ordinance authorizes. The Civil Service Commission submitted an informal bid document to four facilities, which offered suites, free in-house breakfast, free shuttle service, complimentary use of a conference room, and so on. Of the four facilities, only Cambria Hotel and Suites responded. They committed to meet all identified bid criteria. Ms. Brenda Sobiak is sitting in for Director Long. Can you please explain why the formal bid process was waived, and any other details you'd like to share?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Brown, President Klein, and members of council. As you mentioned, this legislation is for our police and fire promotional testing. We bring safety officers in from all over the country. They work here for a week, sometimes two weeks, grading, conducting interviews, and they are unpaid for this. The city does pay for the hotel rooms, the flights, and per diem costs for food. The reason for the waiver is that it's very difficult to compare the intangibles of the hotel room and space. In the past, we've moved around from hotel to hotel because of cleanliness and transportation issues, so we found that Cambria has worked very well with us, and has the transportation services needed for this testing.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions for my colleagues about the testing or the bid? All right, I move for passage, please.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you, President Klein. That's all I have in my committees.
Thank you, Chair Brown. Our next committee is Public Safety, chaired by Councilmember Brown. Chair Brown, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight, we have to amend the two thousand seventeen capital improvement budget and transfer forty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars between projects in the Safety Voted Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into a contract on behalf of the Division of Support Services with Reinhardt Tower Services, Inc., for the structural reinforcement of two communication towers, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the city code, and to authorize the expenditure of forty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars from the Safety Voted Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. Director Stewart?
Yes, Councilmember Brown, members of council, Council President Klein. Until very recently, the FCC administered, issued an order requiring that communication towers before additional information, or additional equipment could be installed on these structures to be inspected for their soundness. There were two towers in our system that required this inspection, one on Groves Road, the other north. The reason it was made, asked to be an emergency, is that the last camera for the Neighborhood Safety Camera Program needs to be, the antenna needs to be installed on the Groves Road antenna. In an attempt to let this happen relatively quickly, we asked that the standard procedure be waived. Also, the Reinhardt Tower Company has traditionally, historically been the one to do these inspections for the last several numerous years.
If there are no further questions, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Also, to amend two thousand seventeen capital improvement budget, to authorize the appropriation transfer funds within the General Permanent Improvement Fund, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreement for the purchase of body-worn cameras and accessories, and video management system for the Division of Police, to authorize the expenditure of six hundred thousand dollars from the General Permanent Improvement Fund, and to declare an emergency. Assistant Director Stewart?
Thank you, Councilmember Brown, against Council President Klein, city council members. This allocation of funding will take care of the next issuance of body cameras and ancillary equipment, which is associated with the program. By the end of this year, we will have six hundred officers equipped with, outfitted with the cameras and other equipment. This will include all second shift and third shift patrol officers, officers assigned to CRT or Community Response Teams, and the day and evening mid-watch patrol units. Again, this includes the cameras and then accessories associated with the program.
This legislation is sponsored also with the Council President. Are there any questions? I would like to pose one to Assistant Director Stewart. Again, are we on target with the installation for all of our police officers with body cameras?
We are on speed or on target. Effectively, what will happen at this point is that until the end of two thousand and eighteen, approximately eighty cameras will be issued a month until all personnel are issued the cameras.
Thank you. President Klein, do you have any comments, sir? Hearing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
That's all I have this evening, sir.
Thank you. The next committee is Public Service and Transportation, chaired by Councilmember Harden. Chair Harden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. At this time, I would ask Chief Innovation Officer Mike Stevens to please approach the podium. We have two pieces of smart city legislation before us tonight, and so first, before I read those, I'd ask Mr. Stevens to just introduce himself to council and to the viewing public, and talk about your role as Chief Innovation Officer, and how it pertains to smart city efforts.
Great, well, thank you, Chairman Harden. President Klein, members of council, thank you for having me here today. As the Chief Innovation Officer, I'm focused right now on making sure our Smart Columbus Initiative is moving forward, that we are working hard on both the USDOT grant, as well as the Vulcan grant, which has a couple pieces of ordinance in front of you tonight. It's critical that we find ways to improve our mobility, and really offers those ladders of opportunities for our residents, and especially in those neighborhoods, those impact neighborhoods that we want to provide people with an opportunity to get to jobs, workforce training, healthcare. So I'm thrilled to be back with the city of Columbus, and I appreciate the opportunity to introduce myself.
Thank you, sir. So I'm going to read both the titles, if that's okay with everyone, and then ask Mr. Stevens to go over the legislation, and then after conversation, we'll present it for passage. That's okay. First, I have ordinance twelve twelve dash two thousand seventeen, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a sub-recipient agreement with the Columbus Partnership relative to the implementation of the Smart Columbus Electrification Plan, and to waive the competitive bidding requirements of Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of one million, five hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the Smart City Private Grant Fund, and to declare an emergency. Second ordinance is ordinance twelve ninety-four dash two thousand seventeen, to authorize the Director of Public Service to execute a professional services contract with GPD Group relative to the Smart City Challenge Vulcan Charging and Decarbonization Project, and to authorize the expenditure of up to one million, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty-seven cents from the Smart Cities Grant Fund, and to declare an emergency. Mr. Stevens, would you just talk about these two pieces of legislation, and then I'll open it up for questions from my colleagues.
Thank you. President Klein, Chairman Harden, members of city council, as part of winning the Smart City Challenge, the city was awarded a ten million dollar grant from the Paul Allen Family Foundation, also known as Vulcan. The foundation's ultimate goal is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. We are in year one of the Vulcan grant, which supports the Smart Columbus Electrification Plan, and are focused on the following priorities: grid modernization, electric vehicle adaption, electric vehicle consumer adoption, and electric vehicle charging infrastructure. The two ordinances before you tonight help us move towards meeting those priorities. Ordinance twelve twelve, two thousand seventeen, enables the Columbus Partnership to be a sub-recipient of the grant to lead initiatives aimed at encouraging electric vehicle adoption by individuals, private employers, and increasing the charging infrastructure. As a sub-recipient, the partnership will be operating under the same terms and conditions of the grant, as well as the same procurement conditions as the Department of Public Service. Ordinance twelve ninety-four, two thousand seventeen, authorizes a professional services contract with GDP Group to provide program support needed to accomplish the Smart Columbus Electrification Plan. I appreciate your consideration of these two ordinances, and would be happy to answer any questions.
President, uh, Councilmember Brown.
Michael, how many charging stations are we talking about throughout the entire city? What is the projection on charging stations on east, south, and west of the city of Columbus, if you have that number available to you?
I do. We're looking for at least five DC fast-charging stations. We're looking for a hundred charging ports for the city fleet electric vehicles, and fifteen charging ports at multi-unit dwellings, and thirty-five workplace charging ports.
Are we going to do any with any of the fire stations? We just talked about C and G, so are we going to have those in conjunction with that, or is it going to be separate?
I will jump in, if Director Lombardi wants to follow me. We are having an initial conversation on how we're going to implement this across the fleet. I don't think we have any specific locations finalized yet. I know we are meeting in the future to talk about that, so it's going to be a mix of the C and G, as well as the electric fleet.
Would you share that discussion with this council, once you guys put that all together, please?
Be happy to.
Thank you.
Mr. Stevens, I have a question, just about the practical nature of how the partnership of the city and the partnership coming together to implement the rest of the Smart Cities process. How do we choose who takes what projects, implements projects? How is this working? Explain the partnership for me.
So we're working closely with the Columbus Partnership on what we're considering a joint venture around Smart Columbus. joint venture around Smart Columbus. And the reason for that is we've won $50 million in grants between USDOT and Vulcan, but from the private sector, we've had over $350 million commitment on investment in the, whether it's AEP and their charging station, as well as other private sector individuals who are companies that are engaged. The way we're breaking up on the, for this specific piece, we asked them to take the lead on consumer adoption as well as working with our private companies to make sure that fleet adoption and their, you know, selling it to their employees. It made sense based on the relationships they have. I mean, the partnership companies represent about 20% of the workforce in Columbus. So that was why this specific route was taken with that. As we move forward on the grants on the USDOT side, we're going to continue to work with them to make sure we get the private sector engaged. They won't necessarily be taking the lead, but it's important that we have enough community involvement throughout, and they're a critical part of that.
Thank you. President Klein?
Thank you, Chair Harden. I just want to note to Mr. Stevens, first, welcome back to the city.
Thank you.
Enjoyed working with you in my days chairing development when I first joined council. But just to put together, what I've noticed is serendipitous to tonight's agenda with the United States government's withdrawal from international agreement on climate change and shying away from the science behind climate realities. The City of Columbus, I know our office has received a lot of calls and inquiries about its emphasis on green infrastructure, green technologies, focusing on what the city can do in the space of climate change. We have these two pieces regarding smart cities with electrification and decarbonization. We had the piece earlier with C and G. There was also a piece in utilities and consent dealing with Blueprint Columbus. So Columbus as a city structure is not shying away from our efforts, not only in doing its part to preserve environmental integrity, but also at the same time, as it relates to smart cities and blueprint on the job creation side, to make sure that people are employed and using green technologies as a way of building a 21st century economy. So we have these wonderful opportunities tonight to highlight the City of Columbus's investment and proud of the work that you're doing already, Mr. Stevens, and know that the city's in good hands moving forward on these two particular pieces of legislation.
Thank you, as well said.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. If there are no further questions or comments? Thank you. First, I move for passage for ordinance 1212-2017.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. And second, I move for passage on ordinance 1294-2017.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. If we could go back to page 14, to ordinance 1374-2017, which I asked to be read in second reading. 1374-2017 is to amend the 2017 capital improvement budget to transfer funds between projects within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to modify and increase the contract with Dan, Danbert, Inc., in connection with the roadway improvements, Scioto Peninsula Duct Bank Rebid Project, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $578,374.2 from the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund and declare an emergency. I've asked Director, Deputy Director McGinnis to speak on this legislation, and if Director Gallagher has any additional comments to chime in there.
Chair Harden, President Klein, members of council, this ordinance will support the River and Rich Project that will redevelop the former Riverside Bradley site on Rich Street in East Franklinton. This $50 million project will include 230 housing units, including 124 workforce housing units, commercial office and retail space, and construct a structured parking garage with 200 public spaces. The City of Columbus is providing public infrastructure funds to support the project. Public Service is already working to construct major infrastructure improvements to underground utilities on the side of Peninsula to support economic development in the area. In order to build the River and Rich Project, overhead utilities also need to be moved underground. Therefore, it made operational sense to coordinate the completion of these public infrastructure projects together, and this coordination will also allow for improvements to be built as quickly and cost-effectively effectively as possible.
Thank you, Director McGinnis. So just to be clear, they were, Danbert was already doing part of this project, so the rebid process was just to extend the work to adjoining piece of the project?
That is correct.
All right. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
That's all I have in my committees this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Harden. The next committee is Public Utilities, chaired by Councilmember Stenziano. Chair, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight, in Public Utilities, bring forward ordinance 1029-2017 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Sinus Construction Company for the Upper Scioto West Shaft Improvements Project, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of $1,968,783.73 from the Sanitary Sewer Reserve Fund to the Ohio Water Development Loan Fund, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,968,783.73 from said loan fund for the Division of Sewage and Drainage, and to authorize an amendment to the 2017 capital improvements budget to create sufficient budgetary authority for this project. The Upper Scioto West Shaft Improvement Project consists of the repair of 14 axis shafts to the Upper Scioto West Interceptor Sewer, which has been approved for below market rate loan financing through the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency's Water Pollution Control Loan Fund administered by the Ohio Water Development Authority. The work being done will mitigate possible failure of the shafts that could create blockages in the sanitary sewer and led to surface, lead to surface flooding and to discharge the two streams. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next is ordinance 1080-2017 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to execute a construction contract with Bueller Excavating, Inc., for the Marion Road Area Neighborhood Project Number Two, Smith Road Sidewalk, Storm Sewer, and Waterline Improvement Project, to provide the payment of inspection, material testing, and related services to the Department of Public Service Design and Construction Division, to authorize an expenditure up to $725,888.26 within the Storm Sewer Bonds Fund, to authorize a transfer and expenditure up to $730,377.76 within the Water General Obligation Bonds Fund, and authorize a transfer and expenditure up to $599,055.33 within the Streets and Highways Go Bonds Fund. This is a joint project between the Department of Development and the Department of Utilities. Work will consist of construction of approximately 3,100 linear feet of storm sewer and 31 linear feet of water line sidewalks and extended detention swales located in the near south planning area. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And the last ordinance in Public Utilities is ordinance 1332-2017 to authorize the City Auditor to transfer $1,744,822.64 between object classes within the Sanitary Sewer Operating Fund Budget, to authorize the transfer of $1,744,822.64 from the Sanitary Sewer Operating Fund to the Electricity Operating Fund for the payment of unbilled electric charges for the Division of Sewage and Drainage, and to appropriate $1,744,822.64 within the Electricity Operating Fund and to declare an emergency. In the year 2010, an electric meter was changed out at the Division of Sewage and Drainage Southerly West Wastewater Treatment Plant. This meter was not properly calibrated, resulting in inaccurate readings in the actual usage, which resulted in the underbilling of the accounts. There is sufficient budget authority available in the 2017 Sanitary Sewer Operating Fund's budget to fund the transfer and appropriation. This ordinance is being submitted as an emergency in order to align budget authority with projected expenditures to provide for the timely payment of these charges to the Division of Power. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
If I can move on to judiciary and court administration, tonight bring forward ordinance 1399-2017 to authorize and direct the City Auditor to transfer $365,832 within the general fund, to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management to enter into a contract with the Franklin County Public Defender Commission and to provide legal counsel to indigent persons charged with criminal offenses, and to authorize the expenditure of $1,565,830 from the general fund and declare an emergency. Since 1976, the city has contracted with the commission to represent the Franklin County Municipal Court indigent persons, which is determined based on poverty guidelines as determined by the United States Department of Health and Human Services. Those individuals charged with violation of an ordinance of the City of Columbus would apply. Except for state charged misdemeanors, the city funds the municipal unit while the Franklin County Commissioners fund the balance. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage by voice vote.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Page? Stenziano?
Yes.
Tyson?
I'm staying.
President Klein.
That's all I have in my committees tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Stenziano. Any other business to come before council? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn? Regular meeting number 29, it's been moved and seconded. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
We stand adjourned on regular meeting number 29. We do have zoning in a few minutes. We have two non-agenda speakers, so I'm going to go ahead and take those momentarily.
Momentarily.
You will now come to order. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
We'll now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Page chairs that committee. All members serve on the committee. Chair Page, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. We do not have any speaker slips this evening. However, we will have testimony from staff as well as some applicants who may have additional comments to make. So I would like to ask anyone this evening who will make comments to stand and raise their right hand. On the advice of the City Attorney's Office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against any council variance, including staff, please stand as you are and raise your right hand to be sworn in. I swear or affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
I will.
Thank you. Our first variance this evening, 1358-2017, to rezone 8240 Sankis Boulevard 43081, being approximately 3.49 acres located on the east side of Sankis Boulevard, approximately 520 feet south of Lizelle Road, from C2 Commercial District and LC3 Limited Commercial District to LAR12 Limited Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Akadale Investment Company LLC. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The City Department's recommendation is approval. Far North Columbus Community Coalition's recommendation is approval. Are there any additional comments from staff? Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I would first like to move to wave second reading.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
I, thank you. I now move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. We have a companion piece, 1359-2017, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 333302 AR12, ARLD, and AR1 Apartment Residential District Use, and 3333255 Perimeter Yard of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 8240 Sankis Boulevard 43081, to permit a commercial driveway and reduced perimeter yard in the LAR12 Limited Apartment Residential District. The applicant, again, is Akadale Investment Company LLC. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The City Department's recommendation is approval. Far North Columbus Community Coalition's recommendation is approval. Are there any additional comments from staff? Thank you. I would first like to move to wave second reading.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. I now move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
1372-2017, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 336301 M Manufacturing Districts, 336103 Development Plan, 331209 AL, 331225 Maneuvering, 331221A Landscaping and Screening, 331227 Parking Setback Line, 331249 Minimum Numbers of Parking Spaces Required, 332105A1 Vision Clearance, and 336324 Building Lines in an M Manufacturing District of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1408 North Grant Avenue 43201, to permit a multi-unit residential development with reduced development standards in the M Manufacturing, C4 Commercial, and CPD Commercial Plan Development Districts. The applicant is Wyland Park Development LLC. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The City Department's recommendation is approval. University Area Commission's recommendation is approval. Are there any additional comments from staff? Thank you. There is a request to amend this variance to an emergency. I would like to ask the applicant's representative, Mr. Dave Perry, to come forward and to explain why you're requesting an emergency. Thank you for coming this evening.
Good evening, President Klein, zoning chair, Page, and all members of council. My name is Dave Perry. I'm the agent for Wyland Park Development LLC. This is a very exciting project. I know you're all familiar with the Columbus Coated Fabrics site in Wyland Park, and this zoning variance grants variances for the development of that site in several phases for different types of housing. The request for emergency is, the wagon run or development is ready to go, the civil engineering is completed, there's a $20 million construction loan pending the grant of zoning, and so we're requesting to the emergency amendment to allow them to proceed sooner.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Are there any questions or comments? Thank you. I would first like to move to amend this variance to emergency.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And I now move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
1376-2017, to rezone 5284 Avery Road 43016, being approximately seven acres located on the east side of Avery Road, approximately 3,262 feet south of Carroll Road, from R Rural District to LAR1 Limited Apartment Residential District. The applicant is preferred living. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and there is no area commission for this particular area. Are there any additional comments from staff? Is the applicant present and would like to make any additional comments? Thank you. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I would first like to move to wave second reading.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. I now move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And this is the companion piece, 1377-2017, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 331227 Parking Setback Line and 333318 Building Lines of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 5284 Avery Road 43016, to permit reduced parking and building setback lines for an apartment complex in the LAR1 Limited Apartment Residential District. The applicant, again, is preferred living. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and there is no area commission. Are there any additional comments from staff? Any comments from the applicant? If there are no questions or comments, I now move to wave second reading.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
I now move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you, President Klein. That's all we have in zoning this evening.
Thank you, Chair Page. Any other business to come before the zoning committee or regular meeting number 30? Seeing none, may I get a motion to adjourn? Second, clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
We stand adjourned.